Do you want to start with the Germans or Alex?
We can start with the Germans. Whereas, do you actually have a copy of?
The agenda?
All right, first one for a German's this evening, RRFACF LLC 560 Wicca Park Road.
I did submit, thank you, John Bennett, the applicant, I did submit a letter, which is self-explanatory, but the principal is out of town and unavailable to attend the meeting and wishes to be present on any vote. And also, I've been informed by the building department today that there will not be a full board to be able to vote this evening since Alan is here, of course, by Zoom or whatever the medium is, but doesn't have the ability under the state law to vote. So if you adjourn this application until the April meeting, the next meeting in April, I would greatly appreciate it.
Okay, motion to adjourn until the 15th, at which point we will schedule a vote on a preliminary sketch plan.
I'd like to object to that because we need to discuss the hearing before a vote and have sufficient time to do that. And I was also going to suggest that we adjourn for in-camera discussion of the legal aspects of the application.
Well, I would, I'm asking for an adjournment, it's, would be unusual not to grant the adjournment. And if my client wants to be here for a vote, my client's entitled to be here for any discussions.
Well, we're not here for a vote, we are not.
I would like the matter adjourned for all purposes.
Let's, let's, let me clarify the motion, motion to adjourn, RRFACF until April 15th, maybe. Is there a second for that?
Well, can I just clarify, are we going to have this time to discuss as we have to the application on the record fully, including the legal matters which should be discussed in camera?
No, unless there's pending litigation, you can't discuss, you have to discuss legal matters, not in camera. You have to discuss them in the public.
That's the open meetings law and general municipal law. Mr. Bennett, would you have any qualms about if at the April 15th meeting, we continue discussion and possibly adjourn it at that point for a future vote?
Well, I, yeah, because there's no reason why you can't discuss it and vote.
Well, you don't want us to discuss it.
I mean, I can't, I can't.
You're asking us to adjourn it on the basis that the applicant is not here because he wants to be here for a vote.
Yeah, you've had more than, this is an application, a site, sketch plan application, it's been pending for over a year. I've never had any sketch plan application go anywhere near that far. You've had more than adequate time to discuss this, but if you want to discuss this and deliberate before you vote, I can't stop you from doing that.
Correct.
Of course.
So let's, let's adjourn this if we want to discuss it before we vote next week, our next meeting, we'll discuss it.
Before you vote.
Why, I think we're required to discuss it.
The in-camera part, we, that's off the table, right?
In public.
Yeah, you can do, of course.
There's been no discussion of it, we had a hearing and there's no discussion, there's no.
So you'll do that next week, to, in the two weeks from now?
That's the plan.
That's what boards do.
Yep.
They discuss and then they vote.
Okay, including we have to discuss the legal aspects of the case.
Yes, which, unless there's pending litigation, you can't go in camera, you can't, you can't go into executive session.
I think we can consult with our attorney.
Well, you can consult all you want, but the law is that unless there's pending, no, no.
Because attorney-client privilege would be breached if we discuss it in public.
He's a public lawyer, he's not a private lawyer, and he's bound, as all you are, by the public officer's law. You can't just say, "I want to ask a legal question," which are asks, which are asked in public all the time. Absent pending litigation, you cannot discuss anything in camera. Those discussions, those deliberations, including legal deliberations, are supposed to happen in public. If there's a pending litigation, which involves litigation strategy and things of the like, then you can properly call for an executive session. But if you want to discuss legal matters, discuss them two weeks from now in the open, like you're supposed to.
Thanks, John, that's my understanding as well, that's what John Bork, when our counsel has advised us, so.
No, that's great, but I just, I still don't understand the rationale for while we're all together as a board, not discussing the application now.
Because you can do it two weeks from now.
At a public hearing, but what's the rationale?
Well, there's, there's two practical issues. First off, Mr. Bennett did request an adjournment, and second of off, Mr. McFarland is joining us by Zoom, so it might be an easier forum to discuss when we have him here in person.
Thank you, I would again renew my request for an adjournment for the two weeks, at which time, obviously, it's, and you're right, and you should properly discuss these things and deliberate them before you vote.
Right, but we shouldn't properly, it's not proper to not be able to have a discussion and be rushed into a vote the same night.
That's not, that's not at all true, you've had to file for over a year.
We haven't been able to discuss it.
Oh my God, now just stop lying, you've discussed it a million times. Incredibly rude, John, and I don't accuse you of lying. You're rude.
Okay, you need to maintain some civility in front of the board.
You are not civil, you've had all the time in the world to discuss this, you just make things up. You are, you are, is actually what?
Slander, I'm not lying.
It's not slander, you're the lawyer, we're in a public forum. You know something, yes, I am, because you're being absurd.
Okay, keep your voice down.
This is privileged, there's no slander here.
Time out, please, time out.
I'm advocating for some ability to discuss this application in public.
And I'm not taking it away.
Totally appropriate.
I'm not suggesting anything but that, I'm not suggesting anything but that.
Because I don't know where the other board members stand, we haven't had 30 minutes of discussion on it.
So you can have all the time you want.
It's not appropriate.
Excuse me, right, we're going to make sure that no one speaks unless they're recognized by the chair, please. If we can't abide by those rules, we're going to take a five-minute break, let everyone cool off, and then come back and try it again. And we'll keep breaking until the rules are followed. So please, no one speak unless you've been recognized by the chair, okay? Now, right now, we have a motion to adjourn this matter until the 15th. Is there a second for this motion?
I second it.
Okay, all in favor? Aye. All opposed?
Nay. May I speak?
There's been a motion.
There's been a motion, I think you have to vote, yes or no?
I would say nay at this point.
Okay, I think it's two to two, so John, what do we do?
That is a very good question. All right, so we will, that is an effective denial.
John, please.
That is arbitrary and capricious, so you better figure out some way to do it.
I, to soldiers of the board, I don't see any prejudice to us in moving this to 15th. If we're, if we have discussion on the 15th, then we don't want to move to a vote at that stage that the board isn't within its rights to do.
Understood, so let's put, let's, hold on, Amanda, please.
If we, when we adjourn to the 15th, can we have our discussions, and then if we need more time to discuss in public questions that people on the board may have because of the gravity of the case and the intricacies that haven't quite been worked out among ourselves with our lawyer, can we then put it off to the first to have more discussion, can it be in public and the vote?
We could do a vote to adjourn at that stage.
Yes, okay, so you can do that.
It would be over my objection, but you could.
Understood, John.
I understand.
Time, so I'd like to, now that you've had that question answered, I'd like to motion that we adjourn this matter until the meeting on April 15th, is there a second? Second, yeah, did you want to say something?
No, I was expecting Alan to say.
Second, technically Alan can only listen.
I can't vote.
Yeah, so all in favor of adjourning this until April 15th, say aye.
Aye.
So that was just for the record, so we have three in-person votes, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
And opposed?
No.
One no, so we have three in-person votes, Debbie, Amanda, myself, and one opposed, so the motion carries.
Thank you.
So we will adjourn this until the 15th, okay? What's next?
Next on for adjournment is Wool Hill LLC 783 Hill Street.
I, John Bennett, the applicant, we'd put in a request for an adjournment to the May 6th, you could make it, you could make it June 6th. There's, there's an estate involved here, and I just, it's, it's on hold, it's in probate, so there's no one.
So you want to go to June, what's our June meeting, would that be the?
I do not know. Doesn't matter, it could be.
It would be, the first Monday in June is June 3rd.
Third, so let's adjourn this to June 3rd, John?
That's fine, thank you for your patience.
Motion to adjourn Wool Hill LLC until our June 3rd meeting.
It, it might indeed go away, I just, I don't have the authority to get that definitively from anybody, so thank you for your patience.
So let's just push it out until we have a better view, so we don't have to keep adjourning this one.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Is there a second for this motion? A second, all in favor?
Aye.
And then, if I may, oh, you're going to call.
So motion, that motion passes four.
Three.
Four, whatever, all four ayes, okay? And then the next agenda item, please.
For adjournment, Conamara Corp. and 52 First Neck Lane LLC.
Now, I put in a letter requesting an adjournment, the question is whether or not there's relief required from the zoning board of appeals. I put that question to Chris Talbot probably three or four weeks ago. I, I know, he's been very busy since he came back, I, he, he's been, he's met initially with the village attorney on it. I, I don't have an answer from him yet, so if we could, I don't want to rush him, so if we could put that over to May 6th. Because I'm, I'm, I, he, he has to make a determination as to whether a set of laws which apply to flag lots, whether or not they apply to existing flag lots, or rather, they are subdivision standards for flag lots to be created.
Understood.
Yeah, so again, my patience, my, thank you for your patience on that.
So, motion to adjourn Conamara Corp. and 52 First Neck Lane to our May 6th meeting, is there a second? Thank you, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much for your time, have a wonderful weekend, thanks.
I hope you had a great Easter. Uh, next agenda item, John?
Okay. So going back in order, Buzz Chu, 656 County Road 39A, this is a site plan. And just as a housekeeping matter, I've reviewed the affidavit of posting and the affidavit of mailing, everything is in order, and the board has jurisdiction.
For the applicant, David Gil Martin Jr., from the law firm Greenberg Troireg, 2317 Montalk Highway Bridge Hampton. As, as John mentioned, we're here for a site planning application, it's a public hearing for that. I have Brian Chu and Marilyn Ruckauski, who are the principals at Buzz Chu Chevrolet, and I'll have Brian address you a little bit later on in our presentation. I think it's, it's important to first note that the property is located in a highway business zoning district, and has all of the approvals and certificates of occupancy to operate as an automobile dealership. We tonight are coming before you, and you saw this in a, in a work session, to tweak both the site plan and the associated covenants with it. I think the tweaks, easier to show you on the alignment map that we submitted. So the first tweak is we're looking to put in some electric car charging stations, which are located here, this is County Road 39. This is the subdivision to the back, and the two car charging stations are there, and we have another one located there. The second, and you'll, you'll see it on the plan, the second tweak is we would have a program where we put cones in to block access to the rear of the property after we close at 6:00 AM. Current covenant requires us to close, we can open at 8:00 and close at 6:00, six days a week. The third tweak is in this area to provide spaces where we can drop off disabled cars that come in from the towing companies. The fourth tweak is a tweak to the covenant, where we're agreeing to have the garbage pickup, which I understand creates some disturbance be done after 10:00, and obviously, before 6:00 during the weekdays. And then finally, again tweaking the, tweaking the covenant to allow us to get parts and parts-only deliveries, which would be dropped in this port-cochere in the front northwest part of the building, so it doesn't impact the rear. That doesn't include new car drop-offs and that type of thing, it's, it's basically a van that comes in and drops our parts.
That's after hours, though, yes?
That's, that, we'd ask to be able to do it before hours is, is the time. I'd ask Brian Chu to come up, we've had some dealings with the neighbors who have voiced some disconsent with the operation, so I think it's, it would be fair to have him come up and tell you what he's done over the last few years to try and accommodate that. Brian?
Did a couple of things.
If you can, I'm sorry, just name an address for the.
I'm sorry, Brian Chu, I live in Matateck, so we need, okay. Um, we did a couple of things to try to help the neighbors out, we have had three or four different meetings with them, the Tin Angel Sue from the police department, the mayor's assistant, the last mayor. We've had them at Buzz Chu just to go over things and try to litigate this out to, you know, so there was movement on both sides. But a couple of things that we have done already to try to help this was, I sent letters to Rapid Recovery Towing, which Rapid Recovery Towing is our main towing people that come in, we put up cones so, and told them that they were going to put the cars that came in after hours at our emergency pickups in the first six spots, so we, we have done that already. I've done letters to all the new car carriers and told them, "Do not drop any cars off only between 8:00 and 6:00." I have sent letters, I have called them, if they come before that, I, I'm directly on the phone telling them not to do that, they're going to get ticketed. I asked the police, "Just give them tickets, I don't want them there either," that has slowed down immensely. I sent letters to the garbage company and also spoke to them and told them that I did not want the garbage picked up before 10:00 o'clock. It does make a lot of noise when I pick it up and I slam it, so I have done that, they've come after 10:00 on Wednesdays now. I, like I said, I installed cones on both sides to deter any people from getting to the rear of the building at, after hours. I mean, sometimes people have moved them, I have looked at them on the camera, I have called them and told them not to do that. Two of the times we saw it was a different tow company that we have not used, we have called them and told them not to do that also. I stopped parts delivery altogether, he would come around 6:00, 6:30, and for 21 years, he would back the truck up and get out just on the side of the front of the building, and he would unload parts, put it there, nobody was there. He would do that and just leave them there, Monday through Friday. We started having him come in the front of the building, and it was earlier than 8:00, so the police told me he couldn't do that. So I have stopped that altogether, and I have him dropping them off at another place temporarily, which I'll probably get thrown out of, and I'm paying for it to have that space done in Riverhead and everything. So I'd like to get that back to that driving in the front of the building, stopping in the front so there's no noise, unloading in the front, and then just bringing the parts into that porch that he was telling you about. I have paid for surveys for the property and putting the cones in there to just try to help this out. I've also paid areas designed to produce the landscape design, the original one that we started with in 1999 that was approved, and to evaluate the trees that we've had, we've talked about the trees before. I installed 36 cedar trees in front of the neighbors' houses to try to block some noise and block some, some areas from being seen, so they can't see Buzz Chu, which costs a lot of money. I installed irrigation around all those cedar trees, I have constantly talked to all 50 of my employees and told them, "Please be aware of any noises that we have," and that's really some of the things I've done. We've done other things, but that's what we have started to do to try to help this around, all right?
One more thing I forgot to mention, I do have the police report, but one of the things, as you think about this, this site, is we have security issues. We had a $78,000 car stolen in December, so as, you know, we talked this through, I think it's, it's important to keep in mind the security issues, which are, you know, paramount to the business, and I'll hand in a copy of that police report.
Thank you very much.
With that, we can try and answer the board?
Yeah. We can try and answer any questions, but it's a public hearing, so we'll hear from the public and look forward to working through this site plan with you.
I guess I did have a couple of questions, is this the time to ask them?
Yeah.
So one thing, so it seems like there's some agreement that drop-offs that were occurring outside those hours were causing problems, and then the garbage collection before 10:00 AM was causing problems, we had testimony about that, but you all said that. I just wondered if there are deterrents that could be put in place that are more strenuous than just the cone being placed, such as a chain across there, or, you know, large signs that could be posted that say, you know, the hours that, that people are allowed to come in and do drop-offs or do the garbage, so that, because I think, you know, perhaps an orange cone is not going to be enough of a deterrent if there's a driver who is not familiar with the rules, et cetera, in terms of preventing, you know, the noise that occurs outside of the business hours.
Right, we're, we're open to tweaking what the plan has been, we've had the cones in place for a year. We are aware of some instances where people have moved them, and again, that's few and far between, but that has happened, and, and we're happy to talk about a solution, and again, the solution has to be within the confines of the security, right? And can we get the, the police to come to the back, and how do we do that efficiently for everybody? But we're certainly open to tweaking it more if there's a better idea, we have a corner to market on.
Can you expand upon the, the security that you mentioned, the car was stolen? How does, how does what you're trying to do to beef up the security impact the mitigating noises for the neighbors? How, how do you see that all happening?
Well, it, it's, I, I think with the setup we have now, the, the police are comfortable going behind. If we, if we do something on a more permanent restrictive nature, we're concerned that that, we won't get the same coverage, if you will. So we'd like to balance that, but again, open to suggestion.
So the theft happened in the back by?
Correct.
Where the poster to the neighbors' area?
Yes, the, the car was in the back of the property.
So if you had chains versus cones, they could still go into that area when you'd be correct, or something like that? Since it weren't, wasn't a more permanent type of thing?
Right, I don't, I don't quite understand that, that.
What we're talking about, like chains or cones, sort of to designate not to enter that?
Right.
The general public or whoever these people are dropping off parts, so I'm curious about what you think would be sort of a happy medium between what the police need and what.
No, what, I mean, we'd be happy to talk to the police about what works for them. We, we've proposed something that has worked fairly well so far, but if there's a better idea, we're happy to hear it, but that, this is our application.
Yeah, the, the chain I brought up because there's a housing development that has a lot of night, people going to nightclubs who then park in that development, so they put a chain up and they're discussing, you know, putting some kind of fence up that comes down, you know, in the morning hours. But I just was wondering if, you know, some low-cost thing like a chain that has a sign on it, you know, in red letters that says the hours that you can be there, because you have changing, you know, I, people coming by that might not know that. I just, when I see a cone, it seems like a temporary thing, or, you know, orange cone is not enough of a.
Okay, I mean, we're happy to look at it.
Yeah, just a low-cost way to say, you know, clearly, don't come in here before 10:00.
Right, right.
One, one of the reasons why we put the cones, because one fire, we did have our old shop in East Hampton burned down to the ground, so we have to get fire trucks back there as quick as we can if there is a fire. The other problem with putting permanent chains or whatever there is that we had a lot of theft come off of the street that goes into the development there, and they stole wheels, tires, $10,000 worth of lights on back of escalades, and if you put those there, sometimes the police aren't going to be able to get back there because of a permanent structure that's there to make sure that doesn't happen more often. We probably get hit once every two years of theft, up to $10,000 to $20,000. This was a $78,000 Camaro that they don't make anymore, they came in and broke the window, and then they were there for 20 minutes, they cut the battery terminals, so they were there for a long time, four guys pushed it up onto a dolly and drove the car out of there. They were also there the night before with flashlights, about six of them, going all over the property, casing out what they were going to steal, but it was on a Saturday night, and then they stole the car on Sunday, so that's rough.
So, based on what we've heard the last time you were here, I think there were, I have sort of four issues that seem to be coming up. You know, one was the trash, which I think you addressed, so that's during the day. Right now, that trash, the dumpster is located where on the property?
Right here.
In the back corner. Any thought to moving that to a different area of the property that's not so close to the residential?
Well, we're restricted by the code, right? So the idea of putting it in the front is violates the code, and then it's in, it can be in a side yard. The, I think the challenge is getting the garbage truck to it, so I don't know if we can pull it up at all and still have the garbage truck get to it. If we shift it over here, then we're losing the problem to make it somebody else's.
Yeah, and I think that's a good lead into my next question, which it seemed like we were getting a lot of comments, and the trash truck might be part of that with backup alarms. Is there a way during the off, and, you know, cars break down in the middle of the night, so you're going to have deliveries in the middle of the night. Is there a way to have the traffic, or the tow truck traffic flow through the property to drop off so that they're not having to use backup alarms?
I, I'm not sure, we, we can talk to our engineer about that, and, and, you know, we had been looking at the trash issue. We have located the, the spaces up here, they were delivered to the back of the property, and maybe this will, you know, allow them to come in, drop, and then come out, but I think there's going to be some backing up. But we can talk to our engineers about it.
Yeah, so that, that was kind of the one of the things that we were hearing, another one, yeah?
Sure.
The backup alarms have come a, a New York State law, probably around five or six years ago, and it's constantly that, it's for children, so you don't hit people, or I've had a couple of times where people have come out from cars and people almost got hit, but it's a backup thing, and when you have a tow truck that comes around, it's going to be in a driveway, and it still has to back up, matter what, and we do have a lot of beeping, because I sat outside after that was brought up and listened to all the beeping during the day, and it's only during the day with our business hours that we're doing business. And a lot of companies, FedEx, UPS, everyone backs up into the driveway, wherever they are, and they back up and that alarm goes off. It is loud.
Yeah, it is, and, but I understand, you know, daylight hours, it's a backup alarm during the day is one thing, but, you know, two or three in the morning, the backup alarm is another.
We don't want that, and that's why we're putting up the cones, and I'm calling people to not get people back there. It doesn't happen that often, I mean, they could tell you how many times, I'm sure, but, um, maybe once or twice every couple of months, you know, that they go back there, usually they're in the front.
So I'm not sure I follow, so after hours?
We have caught them on cameras.
Drop-off for, like tow, cars that have broken down?
A hundred percent.
And that only hap, that's, you're only getting cars dropped off once or twice a month?
In the back, that, that has happened, and we have gone through our cameras and watched that, and we just saw that, and it was a company that we don't deal with, that was a AAA company or something like that, that someone got broken down on the side of the road, and they were brought there and they moved the cone for some reason, we have these spots sitting right up front for them to put that, we don't know how to relate to get to them.
Understood, so typically, after hour drop-off for a car that's disabled, that's, is in the front of the building?
We have six spots right there in the front that we proposed that we were going to put cones up to put them there.
Understood, that's helpful clarification, and then the last, I think, issue that we're, well, there are two others. One is the landscaping in the back, can you talk more about, I know you've spent a lot of money trying to landscape, didn't have great results for a variety of reasons, but can you talk more about your plan?
Well, we had, we had a landscape plan that was approved by this board in 2000, and the overgrowth, there's a report, you have it, from Aris Design, Tim Rumpf, who's a landscape architect, that said the overgrowth on the subdivision side was choking out what we had put in, they've since removed it, so we're looking at getting a report from Tim or another landscape architect that would talk about how long it's going to take to grow in. I did ask Chris Talbot to go out and inspect the lot to make sure that we were compliant with the current subdivision, I mean, the current site plan, and he said yes, but again, if there are ideas about ways to make it better.
Well, I guess one suggestion is, you know, are there landscape advisors, you know, that could come in and talk about, you know, double rows of plantings or specific plantings? you know, double rows of plantings or specific plantings that would reduce noise and re, you know, so, reduce the possible nuisance caused by noise that, you know, where people might deliver outside of those times. Um, or the garbage collection. Are there ways, are there types of planting, since this is, you know, a, a problem that has arisen since the plan was put into effect that might ameliorate that? Um, and, and can you bring someone in who could advise you like the types of, you know, could you have two rows of hedges that, you know, reduce noise or things like that? And could you, you know, consider doing those depending on the cost?
Certainly would consider, um, upgrading the landscaping plan with some expertise and, and everybody's agreement that it'll work.
I'm just thinking has the idea of a, a wall, you know, uh, more noise canceling permanent structure of wall and then on either side, people could do their, you know, their landscaping as they see fit. I think with freeways and such, they do that. I'm not sure if that would be costly.
I'm not, I'm not sure if we can do that under the code.
Yeah, so to follow up on a man who's point, I mean, I think there are sort of two issues back there. One is a, uh, visual screen, which landscaping probably addresses. And the other is a noise screen, which is a separate issue. Now, it's unclear based on what we've heard thus far, what people are concerned about, or is it both? So if we can, you know, in the public comments section, if we, or we can get some more clarification on, is it a visual thing that people are, are talking about? Is it a, is it a sound thing?
It's both, it's both. We've had discussions. I've talked to the former president of the Economy Minimum Association and it's clear. It's both.
And then, uh, any?
But certainly backing up trucks, that may be, I mean, if that's a sound barrier, I think that you, you probably need a wall.
Well, you know, there, there are some ideas that I think we can tweak the current site plan and that's why we're here.
And then, um, can you talk more about the, um, the, uh, parts delivery? I, I wasn't quite following how that's gonna work.
So, um, we have parts delivered to, to the site, right? It's, it's brought in a van.
Yeah.
Do you wanna?
Yeah.
He probably knows more than I do.
I'm, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. It's cause I, well, it's all this time. So if you look at the, um, picture right here. Let's go, see where I have here, okay. So this is the front of the building right here. The parts store where we get parts is right here. So it's a big door, so we could get all the bigger parts in there. So the truck, truck driver, and that was an eighteen wheeler at the time. Would back in right here, stop right here and then unload the parts, leave them right there and then leave out the driveway. Um, five, ten, fifteen minutes, okay? What we had him doing, and it depends, cause sometimes it was in a van and sometimes it was in a bigger truck. It depends on what he does. Cause he does, um, drop off parts across the street at the Dodge store, um, with the same truck at six o'clock in the morning and drops them off there. He, at the end, we asked him if he would come in the, the one side, that was the east side. I don't even know if that's the east side, but that's how I know. And then he would stop in front of the building and that's what we're proposing to do. Stopping in front of the building, so there is no visual lights, there is no visual sounds there. Dropping the tailgate, cause that's what the noise would be. And then shutting the truck, uh, put that down, take the parts out and roll them into the porch that's all the way up front in the building where we, uh, you know, do new cars and show people the new cars. And then leave out the other driveway and leave right there. That's what we're proposing to do.
The parts deliveries occur?
Every single day.
But before eight AM or?
Um, they were before eight, eight AM, hundred percent.
And you, they still are coming before eight AM?
They don't come to the dealership.
You, you did?
They go across the street at about six thirty seven o'clock.
With, the, the answer to the question is, there's a separate system where they're dropped off in Riverhead at a space at Buzz Two leases and then they're brought over from there.
And you wanna fix that?
Yes, they're not delivered, right now, they're not delivered directly to the site.
Yeah, they're across the street.
Why, why would they be delivered at six thirty across the street even here?
Okay, let me explain that to you.
Yeah. Across, hold on, across the street, we're discussing the other car dealers to the north?
Yeah.
Yes, the Dodge Crisis Jeep Store across the street gets the same truck, cause they come out of the same warehouse.
Yeah.
They come that early in the morning, they go to Riverhead first. They go to Wus Two and then they have to drive back to Pennsylvania, cause that's where the, where the actual yard is where they get the thing. They time out, um, if they're any later. So we have discussed that and s- let's see if we can get a different trucking thing. This is the one that Tera Motors has, uh, and the trucking people, Black Sheep or whatever they're called, have, uh, hired for them. So they're, they're gonna be there, the latest, cause I've talked to them on the phone many times to try to get this a little bit closer to eight o'clock for us. And the early, uh, the latest thing, they're gonna be there at seven o'clock. So that's, you know, what time they're coming from the building.
But if they're dropping at six thirty across the street and you're not, you know, you're three hundred yards.
No, they're gonna adjust all that, hundred percent. There's a, there's a half an hour window here, um, but other than that, if it's not, then we-
I'm just trying to understand why people are complaining about parts drop offs here when it's happening across the street earlier.
Both, there's cars dropped off across the street in the middle of the night. The garbage is done, cause we've been called, the police have been called on us for garbage three times. It was across the street at four thirty in the morning.
Zoning and rules are the cha- same on either side of the street, correct?
No, it's the town is-
So town is-
I understand, thank you. Any other questions, board members? Any other public co- uh, sorry?
We're good unless you have more questions, but we're happy to listen.
Any other public comment? Do you wanna give the public comment?
Sure, we, um, as many of you remember, we were here about a month ago. We did have a, um, work session, but we allowed for public comment to be put in. We are of the understanding that there are, um, town code violations against these properties. I have looked into that. Um, the practical issue the applicant is facing is that under the village code, site plan review and approval is required for, um, these, these issues and what Mr. Gil Martin and, uh, Mr. Chu are trying to address. Um, there are currently code violations pending, including lack of site plan or, or need for a site plan review, um, from the village prosecutor. Um, as people in the public have pointed out, there are subsections of Village Code one sixteen thirty-seven to the effect that land use boards can't entertain an application if there are pending village code violations. So that creates some sort of a catch twenty-two or a site plan purgatory, for lack of a better term, in which an applicant can get cited for a town co- village code violation, but can't go and remedy it. So there is case law in New York State, um, that zoning regulations must be strictly construed against the municipality which seeks to enforce them. And that any ambiguity in the language of the codes must be resolved in favor of the applicant. Um, and that's been applied to site plan review as well. So it's my suggestion to the board that, um, despite these village code violations, that we proceed with site plan review.
Okay. Do we wanna have any public comment now or?
This is a public hearing, so we should, we should entertain public comment.
So three minutes on the public comment, please. We don't need to hear people repeat themselves, so if one person's made the point, we ask that, um, we can move on. Okay. Yep. We gotta approach the bar?
And just identify name and address for the record.
Sure. My name is Peter Widish. I'm of twelve Meadow Grass Lane in Southampton Village. My wife Denise and I purchased that property in nineteen ninety-nine, which is about twenty-five years ago. Back then, there was nothing on Sunrise Highway, uh, behind us and it's all grown since then. The car dealership, the medical offices, and generally, it's been a great experience and we stayed here for twenty-five years. I live in Fort Lauderdale, Florida, but I'm originally from New York and we use it as our summer house. So I understand my neighbors have some friction with the dealership because they live here twelve months of the year and I'm only here for about two or three months. The problems that I've experienced are the Friday night, the Saturday night traffic running through the neighborhood, which gets wild. I'm sure you are aware of that as well. But generally, I think Buzz Chu has a good reputation and I bring my car there and I like working with them. But I think the application that I've read several times is a little bit vague. And I think some of the operations, even though they mean well, to control some of the noise complaints and the visual complaints, I think they're vague and not fully thought out yet. I've run a business for forty years and I'm retired now. I ran five petroleum terminals in the Midwest and we had problems with, uh, break-ins and theft. And what we did to secure the properties was put in chain link fences with gates. And then importantly, we had twenty-four hour a day, seven day a week security. And a security guard would prevent a lot of the problems that I'm hearing right now. So I think that to grant the extension of the business operations is a little premature until some of these items that are still vague can be clarified. And rather than just good intentions, but good policies, such as improving the landscaping, improving the fencing and making it more difficult for some of these operators to make mistakes, would go a long way. And then at that time, if we can eliminate a lot of the friction with the homeowners, because we enjoy, all enjoy the quality of life in Southampton and we wanna see it stay that way. But we wanna see Southampton grow and prosper as well. There is common ground. But let's see the landscaping get improved, the fencing and the business practices get, uh, narrowed down to specific, uh, actions. And then, of course, I don't think anybody would rightly object to any expansion in the business. Thank you very much.
Anyone else?
So, um-
Name and address for the record, bye.
My name's Christopher Barish, twenty-one Meadow Grass Lane in Southampton, New York. So these are for you guys, cause I email the building inspector and I can't tell if you're getting them. So this is my correspondence to each board member. I think Buzz Chu does a good job. I did notice though, um, on the fence, our side, the HOA side, has plantings. Uh, they don't have any. I really like your idea with the wall, but that's gonna be a big expense for him. So maybe the plantings on both side of the fence, um, would be a good alternat- alternative. I don't wanna forget to s- tell you that we did spend around fifteen thousand dollars cleaning up, um, the burn. So, almost to a detriment, because now the homeowners want it planted immediately. And things really haven't bloomed yet. So we probably won't know for sure until like June, what it would look like in bloom. But if you, if you go into Buzz Chu for one reason or another, you'll see, sorry about that. You'll see that on their side of the fence, you'll see the fence. There's nothing planted there. So if you had an alternating, uh, planting pattern, if you wanna call it that, um, it would increase the density. I did notice on the Keen Development on, um, Wickepog Road, that would be kinda like the gold standard. You know, when I walk my dogs there, you can see a tall hedge, you can see through the hedge a little bit and you'll see a big fence and on the other side of that, you'll see evergreens. I'm not expecting Buzz Chu to spend all that money. We're gonna plant something sooner or later. I would certainly embrace the idea of, you know, sharing that cost. We've set money aside to do that. We're ready to do that. I don't think everything's on them. But I wanna be very clear on this. We don't wanna change anything on the hours of operation for any reason. We wanna keep the hours where they are. I don't know how, they needed two or three board approvals to get here, but this board by itself can change the covenant. I don't know how that operates. You do. This is your wheelhouse. Um, I don't think they should be able to go to one board to change that. Um, it's hard to get involvement in the HOA because it's March. Everybody's here in June and July. So it's a good time to make the change, but to get more involvement would be June, July and August. Um, what else? Nobody has said to me, hey, we can change the hours. Everybody does say the same thing about the, the beeping. Um, I don't think a wall would change, um, would reflect the noise sufficiently to, to drown that out. I've been to, um, one of the neighbors' houses and I was surprised, not from Buzz Chu, uh, Chu's, uh, noise, I'm sorry. You can hear traffic. So maybe visit the place yourself. Thank you.
Are you gonna listen to anyone on Zoom?
Yeah.
Okay, let's, uh, no one else in here in the room?
I would like to speak, but I would like to let the other speaker.
Okay, let's go to the Zoom line, please.
Am I coming through?
Yes, we can hear you now.
All right, great. Sorry about that. Good evening. Don Scagnelli, A Carriage Lane. I am a former president of the Dunes HOA, a community of forty-seven homes adjacent to the Buzz Chu property. We oppose this application at this time and any modifications of the existing declaration. On November seventeenth, twenty twenty-two, at a meeting with village mayor, chief of police, code enforcement and building department heads, all agree, Buzz Chu is not in compliance and corrective action was required. Further, on November twenty-first, twenty twenty-two, I met with Brian and Marilyn. Also at the meeting were Lorraine Enright, Angel Perez, Alec Wallach and Tin So, uh, sorry, Tin Hoseau. We discussed the matters causing frustration in our desire to amicably work together. Mr. Chu acknowledged that he does not have control over various activities during prohibited hours, as you just heard. He already stipulated restrictions to his suppliers, but I would say that over the course of the last year, our belief is that that is proved ineffective or sufficiently, uh, ineffective. On February ninth, twenty twenty-three, I met with David Gil Martin, together with Alex Wallach and Tin Hoseau. We discussed the HOA's overall concerns. Mr. Gil Martin presented properly plan and suggested the possibility of relocating the dumpster closer to the front corner and replacing ineffective cones with the installation of electronic gates. On April twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-three, I followed up and requested the status of the mentioned improvements. Mr. Gil Martin indicated that Mr. Chu was investigating and update would be provided. No update was forthcoming. On June twentieth, twenty twenty-three, Mr. Gil Martin asked if the HOA would consider paying a portion of the landscape remediation. I requested Mr. Gil Martin forward a comprehensive picture of what anticipated corrective actions Buzz Chu was proposing and I would discuss with the HOA. No reply was forthcoming. Cones have been, have been in place for over, over a year and are ineffective, as evidenced by numerous calls logged in the police block. Any solution must provide more permanent restrictions, such as electronic gates that would be controllable by emergency services, be it police, ambulance, fire, whatever. In essence, the two most critical issues, as has already been stated, are line of sight and sound attenuation deficiencies that have only grown worse. Um, I believe that the obligations in landscape has been neglected and in order to comprehensively improve the situation, it will almost surely require some form of wooden sound attenuation wall and place a simple stockade fencing and then enhanced landscaping to reduce prominence. At an earlier planning board meeting and actually even at this evening's board meeting, one of the members actually suggested something similar. This would be akin to proven wooden sound attenuation walls along many highways adjacent to other residential neighborhoods. We appreciate village officials considering the serious concerns of our forty-seven homeowners. The proposed changes are inadequate to solve existing problems and therefore we oppose approval until a more effective and comprehensive, uh, approach is put forward and stand ready to amicably work towards a real solution to meet everyone's needs. Thank you.
Any other Zoom? That's it?
That's it.
Okay. How about?
Hi. I'm wondering if I can- Hi, I'm Lorraine Sasan. I'm Lorraine Enright and I bought my home in nineteen ninety-nine on Meadow Grass Lane and I lived directly behind the Chutes. Probably the biggest barn in-
Their side. Um, I have, bear no ill will and I appreciate their efforts, but I would like to share a few things with you. Um, I wanted to speak first, but I actually really would love to play you a couple of videos. Three, three seconds each, just so that you can hear the sound of the dumpster. You can hear the sound of the tow trucks coming in even when they deliver at night.
These recordings are already part of the record.
Have you, have you seen them? Okay, so then I'll go ahead and-
Skip that, cause you'll run out of three minutes.
Okay, so I'm glad you had a chance to see them. Okay. It is apparent, and I'm going to read to stay on script. It is apparent that a good deal of thought was put into the original C N R, special exception, so as to afford our adjoining property adequate protections to ensure peaceful enjoyment of our homes. These restrictions originally proposed should be adhered to, and deliveries of any kind must be limited to the eight A M. to six P M. hours. To extend those hours would be unduly burdensome and disruptive to our residential community, and additionally will have further significantly negative impact on our property values. I have already not been able to rent my home for two years, because when people come in my backyard, they're looking at these big trucks in the back of our homes because of the lack of screening. Any deliveries made on a regular business hours, we ask to be restricted in the front of the property, and I believe Brian Chu has addressed that. The backup alarms from carriers and tow trucks, together with the loud banging of heavy metal from these commercial vehicles unloading other vehicles beyond the prescribed business hours, is unbearable and unacceptable. We're woken up, awakened at two, three, or four in the morning from tow trucks. They're suggesting to back into six new spots. I believe that from the site plan, those spots line up directly adjacent to fourteen Meadowgrass Homes bedroom window. So I'm completely against six spots. I can maybe say three, if everything else is taken care of, but not six. Our attorney that we hired said that they would consider three, but if it's used for after-hours, it's not acceptable. Regarding the vegetated buffer, it has.
I'm sorry, just for one second. Chair, do you want to grant?
Give me another minute.
An additional one minute?
Yeah.
Thank you so much. I appreciate it. Regarding the vegetated buffer, it has been neglected and in a state of substantial disrepair for years. The homeowners have a direct line of sight into the dealership and are subjected to constant loud noise from the crashing of the dumpster, backup beeping, alarms, and the smell of exhaust from the dealership, and County Road thirty-nine, which travels unimpeded into our properties now. We request this berm be immediately brought back to the original approved C N R in whatever way can be worked out. We also request that dumpster be moved away from our backyards. I understand this is a challenge from our attorney and Gilmarten and Brian Chu, but the dumpster is jolting, and the sound's like an earthquake. The ground shakes from crashing of the metal trucks. Perhaps maybe plastic or non-metal lids could be placed on them, but they need to be moved away from our homes. Even with it being ten o'clock, sitting out in your backyard having a cup of coffee, you have to go inside, because it's unbearable. I invite you to come and walk the grounds and see firsthand what we experience every day. Again, I bear no ill will. I want to work with everybody. I think our board is ready to work with everybody, but I don't think anything should change in this amendment at this time. Thank you for your time.
Do we still have someone on Zoom? Okay, let's go back to Zoom.
Hi, everyone. Thank you for the time. I'm Rosa Rita. I'm a summer resident. I live at eighteen Meadowgrass Lane. It's a property that my brother and I share. I think earlier we spoke a bit about, was it the visibility in sight? Is it the noise? And I have to attest, it's both of those things. I had some renovations done on my home recently. I spent about six weeks in the Southampton home. I was actually really shocked by all of the noise and how many times I was awakened in the middle of the night. And what Lorraine said is true. It actually, I thought it was an earthquake and then realized it was the dumpster. So a lot of the comments that we heard earlier are all good ideas. What I would actually like is a firm plan, go-forward plan for two things. One is to abate this noise, and two, for the visibility. My home, eighteen Meadowgrass Lane, I have a direct sight right into Buzz Chu, and right now I'm looking at oversized commercial vehicles and the highway. So thank you for your consideration. I think that would be the best approach going forward. More finalization and a really a concrete go-forward plan. Thank you.
Anyone else like to comment? Yes.
Shawna Byrne, twenty-five Meadowgrass Lane, Southampton, New York. I have been in residence since. Okay, I closed August twenty-fourth of nineteen ninety-eight, but I actually moved into May. Okay, so it's twenty-four, twenty-five years, maybe a little longer. My main concern is that we can all work together in terms of working this out. They own a business, which they are entitled, obviously, to move forward with, but we as residents are entitled to quiet enjoyment and to not be awakened in the middle of the night. I am not abutting Buzz Chu, however, the sound does travel. So I'd like to come to some sort of an agreement in order to mitigate the sound. And now that really hearing about it, mitigate the site plan as well in terms of, you know, being able to maybe protect and mitigate the noise. So I think all these ideas that are before all of you are quite applicable, and hopefully we can move forward in a meaningful manner to get this resolved. And that is it. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Just really facilitate the application for him and help move things along. Do you guys have, I'm sorry, do you guys have a ten-day period after a hearing to submit documents if something, if somebody forgot something?
So it's up to the board. Typically, there is a lag time in which you can keep the hearing open for written submission. And then also for the edification of the board, upon the close of the public hearing, be that if we close it tonight, if we leave it open for a while for written submission, we have sixty-two days running from that closure to make a decision. So the short answer is the board can vote on leaving the record open for ten-day written comment period.
That would help other forty-seven residents.
Or continue the hearing.
Say so, I guess.
Yeah.
Thank you. I'll answer your question. We'll answer your question in a second. Is there a view among board members whether we want to leave this open or close the public hearing?
I think we should leave it open. I think. I have a question, if I may address to someone and forgive me, I'm sure it was in the. When did the business start? When was the, this homeowners association built?
The approvals were in two thousand. The approvals were in two thousand for the Buzz Chu.
And when was the association built?
I think it's nineteen eighty-five.
So why don't we?
But the real history is that both of these were light industrial forty zones, and then there was a zone change for residential. At the same time, there was a zone change for highway business on the highway. So you started as light industrial properties all of it.
Yeah. So I'm inclined to leave the meeting, the hearing open. Do we need a motion for that?
You would need a motion for that, and it's also a good idea to specify, are we leaving it open, pushing it off to the next meeting, the fifteenth? Just give a date when the next meeting will be.
Any view?
And just to clarify, if the meeting can be on the fifteenth, we generally ask that any revised submissions be sent to the building department by the ninth, or it's a week from tomorrow.
That sounds tight, right? Because that's tight.
Well, I mean, let's have, let's have the meeting on the fifteenth, hear what the public has to say. We'll gather that information. I don't want to go back to the engineers and whoever we have to talk to and do this piecemeal. It's going to be in one shot, working with this board and bringing it together. So, you know, I'm not going to be able to get part of it satisfied for the next meeting. I just want to do it all in one shot.
So, and please jump in here if you see it a different way, but again, it sounds as if there are four or five key issues here, right, that are sort of addressed but not clearly addressed. So that if we can have a little bit more closure between the two parties here to get kind of specific fixes that start to address some of the things that we've heard tonight, I think that then the board here can make an informed decision with specifics in front of it.
Yeah, I think it's a complicated issue. We should.
It is a complicated.
Put it over and keep the hearing open and allow submissions and put it over for another public hearing.
Yeah, so I'm inclined to push this one out to a month, the May sixth, the May sixth meeting. Can we meet that, please?
I have no objection other than, again, we're going to make these changes, and we're going to come back with a plan. We're not going to do this piecemeal. It never works.
I think that's the right way to approach, May sixth, May sixth. So motion to keep this meeting open until our May sixth planning board meeting. Second, Debbie, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So that's all for us.
Thanks for your time.
Thank you.
We'll ask for the plans by Tuesday, April third.
Again, I'm not going to bring plans on the sixth, right? We are going to take in everything that everyone says and then work together to put what we can do, a comprehensive plan. But so we're just looking for the public comment now, and then we'll react to that. So we'd like all of the public comment before we start making changes.
On the electronic gate thing, because several people brought up an electronic gate, are you opposed to an electronic gate? Can that be done?
We have no position, yeah. We haven't, we haven't thought that.
I just, because I'm wondering if it can be done and allow emergency vehicles to enter at another place, but have an electronic gate or have them a FOB or something like that? Or is it prohibitively expensive? Or can you come up with a plan to do it?
We'll find out. My experience with that, and I have a lot of experience too in site plans, is that there's something called a Knox box when you have emergency access, but I think that's going to be overkill in this particular situation. But we'll look at it and listen to ideas and try and figure something out that works.
And that also precludes the police patrols from going back there, right? If it's a Knox box, right?
Yeah, because they got to get out, take the key, open the gate.
Sorry. I had a, sorry, go ahead.
I was just going to say with respect to the wall that I mentioned and someone else said that they were thinking about that, maybe you could get some feedback as to whether the homeowners association would be interested in contributing to that, how that, what is the, what is the cost? If you could put some sort of sound barrier as well as landscaping, then that might be something that, on the other side of the wall, people can do what they want, but there's the wall that helps as well. So I would be interested to hear if you could find out more about that.
I would be curious to hear council's opinion, not tonight, but on the sixth, about the ability to put, well, I've never seen a wall in the village of Southampton put in for sound.
Alex, is the code different for commercial fence, stockade fence, so it can be higher than the residential size?
I have to check if the code language is specific, but there are different regulations for commercial and residential.
Got it.
I think it's six feet. I think six feet's the max anyway. Which is what's there?
I mean, I'm not testifying here, but my experience is, because I've dealt with this in a homeowners association, a six-foot stockade fence doesn't really knock down a whole lot of noise, nor does landscaping, but is the.
Site plan and code required us to do.
Is the fencing at the back end, you know, the homeowners association side of the Buzz Chu property, is that on the property line?
It's not on the property line. We required to put in a berm, and it was on the lower part of the berm on the Buzz Chu side. And then one of the things we're going to have to amend the plan, because I think they moved it up towards the top of the berm to try and capture more of the noise.
So I don't have my binoculars with me, but can you point out on the backside of there what all those lines are exactly?
This is the stockade fence.
Yep.
As it was approved.
Okay.
This is a landscaped berm.
And the property line is that?
Is this.
I got it. Okay, understood.
And that's the bottom of the landscaped berm, so it doesn't go like this.
Yep, that's very helpful. The other question I had was, you know, we heard a lot of people comment about dumpsters in the middle of the night crashing, but then we also heard, I think you said that they're picking up after ten.
That was an issue, right? There's no doubt that was an issue. The garbage men were coming at five in the morning. And, you know, we saw it on the videotape and then stopped it. I think it's been pretty effective for the last year. I don't, I think it's coming between ten and eleven on Wednesdays.
But it's been, but it's been a year since you asked your trash removal to stop doing that. Understood, okay.
Alex, is there any variance that, for a dumpster in a particular commercial situation that the village, you know, is there a method to get a variance for where you place that in that kind of situation?
Any provision of the zoning ordinance can be varied by the board, so we feel that it's part of the zoning ordinance. The site plan standards can be modified by this board. It's part of the zoning. We need a variance to be varied.
Okay.
And then I looked it up, the maximum height of a fence in a rear yard in a commercial property is ten feet.
Okay. Amanda, anything else? No? Do you have a question?
I was just thinking about whether ten feet, what kind of sight line, if that does anything for the homeowners or not. That's, it's currently six, is that what you said? Now it's going to be four feet wide.
It's an improvement. It won't scream, it won't scream out the truck.
No, but there were two things. It was the visibility of the trucks, and then it was, as sound as I understand it.
The visibility of the truck has more to do with seeing through the bushes. So the fence has a certain height, and then obviously the trees are higher. So, you know, where there's a gap, you see the trucks and you see the cars.
And the.
At the risk of interrupting, but I think we're talking about two different issues, right? The trucks are on the settlers' lane side. They're saying that the pay isn't sufficient, you can see through, and the line of sight is this way, is my understanding.
Pardon me, no, I had visited Lorraine's house, which would be, I'll use mine. So I think this is Lorraine's house here. You can see right through over the top of the fence. I guess that's what I'm getting at. I think that, I think it wouldn't be a bad idea just to put a ten-foot fence as a sampling on top of the six-foot fence and see how much of an improvement that is.
Ten-foot fence instead of a six-foot fence. Or extend the six foot to ten.
Testimony of Mr. Gilmarten, he stated there's already a six-foot fence there. And I think according to Mr. Wallach, he said you're allowed ten-foot.
Yeah.
So maybe we put a ten-foot fence there, a section, to see if there's an improvement.
Yeah, and the fence is on the berm or before the berm?
It's on the ridge of the berm.
Got it, okay, so.
Alex, if it had to be a fence and not a wall, you'd have to build like a.
It's a fence or a wall.
But that's different. I mean, a fence can have spaces and walls, so.
We like the wall idea, but if it's course prohibitive, we'll take the fence.
Okay, so, thank you, thank you. If you can come up to the microphone. Yeah.
Chris had mentioned that perhaps maybe we stagger trees so that, right now, the fence is here, and all of the landscaping is on our side of the berm, but perhaps maybe Buzz, Brian, and Marilyn can put, stagger some trees, put some trees on their side of the fence as well. I think that will help the trees stay healthier, rather than just cramming everything in on one side of the fence. And just to clarify, the trucks that Mr. Gilmarten was speaking about, they can be seen as you come in, settle. they can be seen as you come in settlers' lane, and what's happening is they're being pushed into the hedges. I don't know if you've seen, but the hedges are dying because they're pushing into the hedges so much that they, the hedges have no room, but so they just need to be, that needs to be acknowledged, and then either tend to them or replace them, so that when the all homeowners come in on settlers' lane, they're not looking at these big, huge massive trucks with signage all over them, ACE, whatever, I, I don't know, PSEG. There was even one truck behind my neighbor's home that had chemicals on the back of it. And I don't think that should be allowed. I, I don't know what the, what it is in the declaration, but I don't think that that should be allowed.
Okay, I, I can clear this up pretty quickly. Where the underlying problems is the association's inability to maintain its own growth, right? And that growth choked out our landscape plan, which, which you have from Tim Rump. It, it's the same exact thing on settlers' lane. They have a, which is beautiful, um, a nice landscape plan there, but all of those trees are now growing into our privet, so the privet doesn't grow, and now it's, you know, it's getting thinner.
So, so Dave, eh, um, can you point out where you've planted on your property landscaping and then where the homeowners association has planted?
Well, well, we had.
Is there a difference?
We had a landscape plan, you know, on our side.
Of your, uh, inside your property line, yep, okay.
Inside our property line, there was a landscape plan.
And then there was landscaping that the homeowners, in the homeowners association property that was shading.
That grew into ours and and.
Gotcha, and is that the case on the?
That's the same, that's the case on this side.
Understood, okay.
And we had, we had somebody look at it. With respect to the trucks, what happens is, is it's an auto repair. And in the, like a landscape company, or companies that are really working uh during the summer and not the winter, drop their trucks off, we fix them as quickly as we can and then get them back to, but they do bring in, you know, all of their trucks for maintenance.
Understood.
That's how it works.
Okay.
So that, the, I mean, those are the trucks, but every single truck on the property is being repaired and maintained.
Understood, yep.
Okay, so, back to mine, I think. So, just for the record, um, the trucks that are parked um in inventory in Buzz Chu's parking lot are backed up against the curb.
Which curb, which curb, please?
Um. I wanna see what the problem is.
You gotta put it upside down.
Oh, sorry, we're done. All right, all right. So, for me visually, so, settlers' lane here, so when they park uh trucks here in the stall, I think unintentionally, they don't sell, if they're there for a while, and they don't have a depleted inventory, these, these stalls stay full. And then when the sun comes up, it, it, it puts sun on the truck, not on their privet. So part of the reason there's, there's shade here on their plantings is cuz the trucks that they park here cast a shadow on the privet. That's why that privet on settlers' lane is not growing. I'm sorry, that's not, that's not the only reason, that's the main reason. You can just, you can drive by and look at it.
Yeah, go ahead. Yeah, sure.
The privet, when, in the summer, is full, it's full except two or three spots, and it's not, it's, it's in the bare spot because of their tree has grown bigger and it just had, had a shaded spot here and there. We were going to go over the landscape and see what we could do to fix that problem, but there is, the privet, there is no shot, you can't, you can see right through with privet. That's what was approved in the beginning, and you can see, in the winter, you can see right through it.
I- is it irrigated?
It's not irrigated. It doesn't have to be. It doesn't have to be.
No, it doesn't have to be, but could that be a problem? Because that's.
I mean, honestly, it's.
That was a problem with our privet.
In two months, you go past there, it's so full, except those two little spots where their tree has overgrown.
Yeah.
And it just had like two shaded spots. If you come back in two months, you'll look at it, there's a third, the, I cut the hedge every couple of months and it's probably.
And privet loses its leaves in the winter.
Yeah, just, when ours wasn't irrigated, it was, it died, and then it was irrigated and it came back.
Only if you can submit to the record, if you can email it or.
I just want for everyone to see um what we're talking about, but it is actually already in the record on the sound drive that Scott Middleton sent to you.
Uh, so, okay, then, then we're gonna cut this off and move on after this.
Okay, I don't know exactly where to put this.
That is not gonna show, yeah, let's.
I can just show the bore. I can show you as the bore.
Yep, got it, okay.
Got it? That's all I just wanted to show you. Okay, yeah.
Okay, um, so just to summarize, uh we voted to leave this open, the public hearing open until our May sixth meeting and uh, whatever that first Monday is in May. And anything that people wanna submit to the record between now and then, please submit, all right? Yep. Yeah, thanks, everyone. So, um, let's move on. What's next on the agenda? Did we, we voted, right?
Did we do, did you guys all raise hands on our next?
Four, four, right, yeah.
Why don't we do it again for good measure?
Didn't we do it? We all said four, yes.
Yeah, we all said aye, yeah, okay, okay.
Okay, so we have four, four, again.
That gets you here, Rob.
So, what's next, John?
Okay, going in order. North Main LLC, fifty-four North Main Street. Vale, good evening.
Good evening, board members. I'm Liz Vale, with the law firm of Greenberg Traurig. We're at twenty-three seventeen Montauk Highway in Bridgehampton. I wanna put out my map for you. Alex, you put it upside down. Let's see, yeah, this should be right. Okay. So this um is an application for a proposed um two-lot subdivision located at fifty-four North Main Street, which is comprised of one point six seven acres or seventy-two thousand seven hundred forty square feet. And it's in a split zone. It's in the R twenty and the R seven point five zoning districts. Uh, there's an existing fifty-three hundred square foot office building in the front. I'm sure you're familiar with the building and the property. Um, and it's on proposed lot two, which is located in the R twenty zoning district. Uh, with the zoning district line running along the back um of the property, right here. So this is the office building, existing office building, and then this back here is a, a pre-existing non-conforming uh wood shop. And the zoning back here is R seven point five, which means it's seventy-five hundred um square feet per lot. Um, this um proposed lot one is comprised of thirty-four thousand nine hundred and sixty square feet, well over the seventy-five hundred square feet required. And proposed front lot two is proposed at thirty-seven thousand seven hundred and eighty square feet, again, over the twenty thousand square feet required. Um, and we submitted a yield map to this board evidencing that this could be a four-lot subdivision and, but we're here seeking the reduced two-lot subdivision. I have extra copies of the yield map for you. Do I send to you or Kathy?
Either way, and then I can pass them on.
So, this would, under the yield that's accepted by the village, it would be normally a four-lot subdivision, but we're proposing a reduced density two-lot subdivision. So we first submitted this application and obtained, obtained sketch plan approval from this board in December of twenty-twenty. A negative declaration was adopted by the board on September eighth, twenty-twenty. The sketch plan approval preferred a flag lot rather than an easement and directed the applicant to go to ZBA. Um, we went to ZBA and had our first hearing on June twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-one, and the application was adjourned to update the plans and show clearing onsite complied. We then appeared again in July twenty-second, twenty-twenty-one, um and answered prior questions of the ZBA. They wanted to make sure that we met um lot coverage, which we do, because we were cutting off the front lot, and there would be a big office building, which we meet the building in lot coverage. And they also wanted to make sure that the driveway width um met the fire code. So we had to meet with the fire marshal, and we did that, and he approved our plans. Then, uh, we went back to the ZBA in August, September, December, January, and finally they issued a decision in April of twenty-twenty-two. Um, during that time period, the ZBA brought up the easement versus flag lot issue, and the granting of the easement, um, they preferred, you know, the easement over the flag lot design, and that's because they were able to reduce the amount of variances we requested by three variances. So if we had gone with the flag lot, um, basically would have required total side yard relief, side yard relief on both sides, and pyramid relief. And by not granting that relief, um, they actually reduced the variances that they were supposed to grant by three, which is actually the charge of that board. They're supposed to give as, as few variances possible under New York State law. So, to their credit, they, they made us amend, they, they requested that we amend our application. So we amended our application from this board's original preference, which was the flag lot plan, to the easement plan, which also required that we re-notice the application and resubmit new plans for that easement plan. And that's the plan that they actually approved. Um, so, after that, our, our um attorneys at the time, we switched firms, but the attorneys um who were with Farrell Brits at the time kept the application, and they submitted to the Suffolk County Health Department. Um, I'm sure this board is familiar that the Suffolk County Health Department takes time. Um, the Suffolk County Health Department required that they upgrade the original septic and conjet- connection with the front office building. Um, and we just finished doing the covenants for that approval. We just received that approval year, at least two years later. So it's been, it's been quite a process, but I wanted to express all this to the board to make sure that you know we have been diligently pursuing this application, even though our sketch, our sketch plan expired before the board because it's only a six-month approval, which actually makes it difficult to um, to continue with it or move forward based on the sketch plan, um, if we did diligently pursue the application. Um, so that's what's before the board now, is the easement plan, and we're back. This, again, is a reduced um, a reduced density plan. We feel it's in keeping with the character of the community because it is our seven point five zoning in the back. We're proposing one single-family residence. The back wood shop is pre-existing non-conforming. Um, as a pre-existing non-conforming use, New York State law encourages uh property owners to eliminate and eradicate municipalities to authorize the elimination of pre-existing non-conforming uses in favor of conforming uses. Um, the subject lot in the back proposed lot one would be surrounded by existing single-family residential dwellings and are seven point five zoning, so it would be in keeping with the character of the community to allow for that. Um, we're also not creating a new flag lot. I think this is really significant because the easement versus the flag lot ends up being a distinction without a difference. Uh, this access to this property in the back has existed since nineteen sixty-two, I believe, when the wood shop was built. And I have aerials that I'll submit to the board, um, from nineteen seventy-six, nineteen, let's see, eighty-four, two thousand one. And I have twenty-twenty-two, just showing you that this, this exact access, the way we're proposing it on our plan has existed since at least when the wood shop was built in nineteen sixty-two, and it's evidenced at least since nineteen seventy-six. And we're not proposing any physical changes essentially to that site, except rep- repaving that and making sure it complies with village code uh requirements for driveways. So I'll submit these two as well. And this is pretty much one. So, I mean, that's essentially our plan. I don't know if you have questions or any suggestions. But I think this is a desirable plan for the village. I think it will benefit the village. Um, I think any issues you have with the access are overcome by the reduced density and making it a conform use, which complies with the code.
What, what was the date of the original sketch plan approval?
Twenty-twenty, and it was during COVID, so you'll have to forgive us, but you can see, I watched all the videos again, and we're all wearing masks, everyone's on Zoom, and there are delays with closings of municipalities and other things as well.
And the.
So it was a difficult, a difficult time to process an application.
Understood, thank you. The comprehensive master plan, the new one, was approved in twenty-twenty-two, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes, it was, but the code hasn't changed.
No, but the comprehensive master, the new comp, the twenty-twenty-two comprehensive master plan disfavors, disfavors uh flag lots, uh particularly by easement, right?
Well, there's one line in the co- in the, in the comp plan. I did read it. It's on page thirty-three, and it's just one sentence without rationale or basis. So while that may be true, I think the code hasn't changed, and this board is actually charged with applying the code to the application in front of you, not the comp plan, which is a basis for future planning, which is a good thing. Um, if you wanna make changes, that's great. But as it stands right now, this is fully compliant with the code.
It was a sketch plan from uh December seventh, twenty-twenty, which this board can take as, as persuasive precedent, even though technically has expired. So the village code, or as the, as Mr., I'll start with the comprehensive plan, as Mr. London pointed out, the comprehensive plan does disfavor access by easement. Um, comprehensive plan is not code, but there is a section of our subdivision design standards that um encourages the board to follow the comprehensive plan. So that's the um regimen of law where it comes to access by easement right now.
And, and I know, I, I know you guys have been whipsawed on this one a little bit, back and forth with the delays. But I think that um, at least this board is presently constituted, um, and I don't wanna speak for everyone, but based on recent things in front of us, have strongly preferred uh flag lots by deeded access as opposed to easement.
Well, we tried to get that, but the ZBA said no. In fact, if you watch the hearings, um, they stated that if they employ an easement, it eliminates three variances. They've got their opinion, meaning you, and we've got ours.
Yep.
We don't need permission from them to have a different idea. That would be from you. Uh, didn't wanna issue a decision where more variances are necessary. Other boards are telling us what to do. I don't wanna inconvenience the applicant or make them feel like they're shuttled around, but we don't wanna grant three additional variances when they're unnecessary.
Yes.
So we really didn't have a choice, and this is still permitted under the law. And even though the comp plan does direct you to, you know, the code does direct you to try and comply with the comprehensive plan, where there's a conflict in a proposed planning study and the actual code that's been adopted by the village of Southampton, this board is required to follow the law, which is the code of the village of Southampton.
Okay.
That's very well settled. I can submit, you know, evidence for you to sit in perspective.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, can you hear me?
Yes, Alan, go ahead.
Yeah, I was on the board then. They, it was fairly routine to, to grant the f- a flag lot. The, the, this issue was new, and I appreciate council's dilemma. It is extraordinary what happens. Frequently, the current uh planning, which is a new, new group of people, and we're new, except for, I guess I'm a hangover. Eh, eh, the, the zoning board comes up with these things with three, and I mean, we've been through this before. I appreciate everything council said. I, eh, if I was still a lawyer or a real estate lawyer, I would be a hundred percent arguing just as she does, but the, there are other merits, as council just recited, and it, it was not paid a lot of attention when the latest plan was done, like ten or, ten or eleven years after the former plan. But it, it makes a lot more, the real, the real discussion was why did they, I just remember when that office building went in and why did they, why did they tear it down and get rid of it and, and make houses back in on North Main Street? It was the discussion back in the, in the COVID period. But uh, I can reflect that it was absolutely routine from the then uh planning board that there be a flag lot. And if, if, if we wanna say, hey, the zoning board wins over our concerns, hey, that, that's our discussion, that we have to reason. Chairman, you have to go visit with the other chairmans, and you have to work it out.
I would just submit that, you know, this access, again, it's not like you're creating a new easement or a new access. For all intents and purposes, we already have a prescriptive easement over this. We've been accessing the back lot over this property, over the same flag for the entire, you know, for the entirety that, of zoning. I mean, so from nineteen sixty-two, since nineteen seventy-six, as she, as you see on the aerials. I mean, so from nineteen sixty-two, since nineteen seventy-six, as you see on the aerials. So you're actually not creating a new flag lot or a new easement, you know, access second lot in the Village of Southampton. It already exists. So we're just asking to formalize that.
Which is permitted under.
Is it subject to a covenant, or, you know?
I'm sorry?
What's, is it subject to a covenant, this easement? Is it shared responsibility for taking care of the easement?
No, it would be after you, after you decide that, there would be probably a common driveway easement, which this board would usually require that we enter into with the front lot.
Counsel, it's a great argument. I remember when it went in.
It exists.
I remember the people that built the thing. I remember where they built, why they built the wood shop. I know, I use them as contractors. I have a long history. You're absolutely right. They just used it, and they put the workshop in the back. No one cared. And you're absolutely right, yeah. It it, they just drove it. It was just fine. We didn't worry about it. And the issue of easements and regulating, we used to regulate flag lots. That regulation of flag lots has been given to a different board in the last couple of years.
But the use is changing, so is there an objection to the front lot having this easement? Is there controversy over the easement?
No, there's no objection to creating an easement. We're asking for you to allow an easement access over this, which has been the access.
I'm just trying to understand the pros and cons of an easement versus a flag lot with deeded flag lot in this area. Ie, is it going to create problems with a changed use in the back? Using this easement, paving it, is it going to be more use? Is it going to be?
No, it's going to be less use. The back use is a, is a non-pre-existing, non-conforming wood shop. So you have trucks going back there, deliveries of wood going back there. It's been used as such for many, many years, and it's almost in conflict with the with the permitted zoning of residential zoning that surrounds it. So if anything, it would be a reduced impact, you know, to allow for a residential lot in the back. Yeah, it would just be a single, it would be one single-family residence. That's how it would be used. Instead of the three that the yield map shows we could make in the back, we're only making one, which would be a thirty thousand square foot lot, thirty-six thousand square feet in the R seven point five zoning district. And I have to say, you know, it's not really an argument, it's a fact that it's been accessed that way since nineteen seventy-six. And on top of that, the benefits of having a reduced-density subdivision here and and a and a compliant use in the back, I believe far outweigh any issue could have on an access that has existed since nineteen seventy-six, which I've just shown you in in photographs.
And just for the board's edification, the ZBA decision number three, one, one, zero of April two thousand and twenty-two, is that correct? Stop if I'm wrong. That granted the variances that would have been there, that are required to have the easement configuration. So the board can choose to approve that if they so want because it's treated as a conforming use, being that it benefits of a variance.
And it's also not simple to just say, go back to ZBA, because they worked on this for a year. And it took a long time for them to make a decision. And to their credit, they did consider all of these issues, and they wanted to reduce because that's what their board is charged with, which may be a little bit out of odds with what this board is charged with on this application. But it puts us in a very difficult position for a really great application, frankly.
So the intention here is to develop the back lot.
Yes.
Residential and leave the office space.
Correct.
In place.
Correct. Yeah, with just one house, that's the intention.
My understanding is the Health Department wouldn't have allowed more than one house back there anyway.
Well, it depends. You, there's always a board review, so that's not necessarily true. There's a board review at the Health Department, and they grant variances all the time. You have to bring in development.
So you're going to have to get a variance to put one house there.
That's what we've been working on, and we're very much in, and, you know, we're just about getting there. This was, that was part of the application, but that the Health Department application that's taken so so long so far is just upgrading the septic because there are these covenants that have to be filed in connection with just upgrading the septic on site as well.
But the Health Department would require, to grant septic approval there would require a forty thousand square foot lot, but I think you said it's only thirty-six?
Thirty-six, that's correct.
And, uh, so you're, you're going to get a, I don't know if that's the right word, but a variance.
Board review, approval, correct.
You're going to have to get a exception from the Health Department.
Per flow, correct.
So, you know, that's close, but to put three houses back there would.
That's the yield under the current village zoning, though. That's what this board gets to consider.
Yeah, I understand.
Yeah.
I understand. Any other questions?
I'm respectfully asking that you set for a public hearing, and we can hopefully move forward with this. I would look forward to working with the board.
Let me ask one other question before we address that. If we were to hypothetically, if we were to require deeded access, and I think that that driveway would have to be twenty, we determine twenty-five feet wide. What does that do to the corner of the office building? Does that have to be?
It makes zero lot line. So we already, that's the application we went to Z to ZBA with, correct? So that's what you're asking about?
So that was one of the ver.
Zero lot line. That was one variance. The other side of the, you would need a variance for the other side as well, which would be a six-foot offset from from the pre-existing non-conforming location of that front office building. You also would need pyramid relief because you'd be drawing a line on a map very close to an existing office building that's thirty-five hundred square feet. And it was about eight hundred and thirty cubic feet, I believe, for for pyramid that was added to that as well.
Understood. So those were the three variances.
Yeah, they were not willing to grant those variances.
Understood.
And for the board's edification, yeah. For the board's edification, the state village law test that the ZBA has to apply is is the minimum relief necessary to affect the applicant's request. So that's probably, I can't know the mind of the ZBA, but that's probably how this transpired.
Yes, and then they did find, of course, that our easement application met their five-part test and was in keeping with the character of this community, and was something that we should pursue, so.
Counsel, I remember when it went in. I remember that, I think Mr. Wilde did it. He was doing construction for me on the beach. I remember all the work. I know the shop. I know when it was used. And I have a long history back probably before you were practicing law. And I was turned down by the ZBA for ideas as a homeowner. I I I'm pretty sure I know the history, and I, we we have to struggle with conformity. The boards have conflicting duties, so we will have to struggle, I will struggle with it. The rest of my board will easily outvote me. But I I know, I know just where, I know why the shop is back there.
So do we, do we want to schedule this for public hearing? The earliest we could do that would be the sixth, right?
I believe so because of the notice requirements.
Yeah.
The board feels that they have enough information at this point.
Yeah. Are you okay with a sixth?
Yeah.
Six, okay.
Basic.
Yeah. That requires a motion, right?
Correct.
Yeah. Motion to schedule this application for public hearing.
On sketch plan.
On sketch plan, thank you. On sketch plan, on the sixth second. Thank you. All.
Thank you, board members. I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Liz, can you, can you actually submit the the plan that you had as the yield map? Do you have an extra copy? I can put that in the file.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, eight sixty-five Merrick is next, right?
Yes, that's what I have.
Good evening. This, my presence here is a little bit unexpected, and I apologize for my attire. I, I thought it was strictly a field day today, but I'm here. We're here really to just maybe respond to questions. Yeah, Vincent A. Guardiello with the Rayner Group, a principal with the Rayner Group, professional engineer. We are the surveyors and engineers for the application. With me is Liz Vail. She's the attorney with the, with us as well. We are here really just to respond to any comments the board may have. Our next step right now is to file a variance application with the zoning board. In a letter dated January twenty-fifth, I think it was, from Nelson Pope, the planners identified some variances that we would need relief from in order to proceed with this application. We are in a position to make that application. So, you know, just to summarize what that was, there were some setbacks with respect to the front yard from windmill lane. The building width is less than the ninety percent. That is a requirement of the code. We are seeking relief for a retaining wall that's designed to to meet the standards of the Health Department. And the last one is parking variance. We did meet with Alex, the planner, as well as the building inspector to clarify what those requirements would be so we could nail down what that number is. So really, we're just here to kind of respond to any maybe secret questions that you may have with respect to you making a decision on that. But it is our intentions to make an application to the zoning board and do that in the coming week.
We need to, with respect to the secret, Kathy, what do we need to do?
Uh, so we had reviewed the Part One EAF and prepared a Part Two and identified no significant adverse impacts and therefore recommending a neg deck. So this board would need to adopt the neg deck. I got the impression that people hadn't had a chance to review that, so I can circulate that tonight when I get home. And so that can be adopted at the next meeting, or we can discuss it.
Okay. Anybody further review? You want to, you want to review that neg deck, or have you already seen it?
Yeah, I took a look at it, but I mean, if we're ready to adopt it based on the findings that there were no, I'm okay with that.
Yeah, there was nothing in it, really.
Yeah.
So.
Let's adopt.
Why don't we just adopt, yeah, why don't we, so motion to adopt that negative declaration. Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Okay.
I am the same ben, the same sentiment without a vote.
Yeah, okay.
All right, great, thank you.
Thanks, board members.
Thank you very much.
And for this application, are we going to adjourn it to a future date? For this, for site plan while we proceed to zoning board?
Do we want to run that concurrently, or do you want to wait until you've navigated the zoning board?
You'll hold a good amount of time if I'm assuming.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure we pick a certain date so we can track it.
I'm thinking at least two months. It should take, it should take at least two months to get to zoning and get a hearing.
So Liz, how, uh, feel about us adjourning this to the June third or June seventeenth?
June third's great.
June third.
Thank you, Chairman.
Okay. Motion to adjourn this until June third. Second?
Second.
Debbie, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
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 All right. So also on the agenda, we have Brian Kelly, so we're going to have to adjourn that, correct, Alex?
Yes, I don't believe we have any new submissions to the planning board. That's also pending zoning board application.
Yep. So, uh, do you, recommendation that we adjourn this to the next meeting, or do we want to push it out farther than that?
I think a month would probably be appropriate. I know they were reviewing what variances may be necessary, but I don't think they would be ready to present the plans with me.
We never had a public hearing on this one, right?
I don't believe this reached public hearing.
No.
No.
We would have done that for a variance, assuming.
So motion to adjourn Brian Kelly, twenty-thirty, County Road thirty-nine A, to our May sixth meeting. Second, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Seventy-four White Street?
Um, this one, we've also received no new submissions. I understand that they're working with Health Department to try and get the necessary approvals.
So May sixth, good on that one?
I think that seems reasonable.
Okay, motion to adjourn seventy-four White Street to our May sixth meeting. Second, Debbie, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
All right.
I think if the minutes are February fifth already, we have that on board to be approved.
I don't. So what, shall we approve the February minutes, February fifth minutes? Yeah, motion to approve the February fifth minutes. Debbie, thank you. Second, all in favor? Aye. So now we're up to date on that one.
Great, so then there's just a note here that our next meeting, we will have forum scheduled for Monday, April fifteenth, followed by Monday, May sixth.
Question, would I be out of line if I wanted to open a discussion on the RRR amongst board members? Is that appropriate?
No, we have all, all four members here. Open meetings law says that we can only have two members at a given time, unless it's direct between council and a member. To have everybody in one room at the same place, particularly without consent of the applicant, that would be a big problem.
We, we are on the record, so it doesn't require the consent. It's, we're on the record. It's a public.
But they, we have already voted on the the adjournment.
Okay, so we'll just push it to that, that's.
On April fifteenth, we can, we can hash things out, and as I said, nothing obligates us to necessarily make the vote of that day. If we still feel like there are things that need to be addressed, that we need more comfort with.
That's what I asked, and you answered that from the that we were able to push it if we wanted to. We did not have to vote at the next meeting.
And if I'm reading the agenda right, I believe that's the only case that's going to be on for that meeting. I think everything else has been adjourned to a further date, so we'll have the whole thing to discuss.
Okay.
Yeah, the the problem is the resolution's been prepared in advance of the meeting, so. And I don't think that we were guaranteed that we're not voting that day. That's the other problem.
Yeah, so let me explain a little bit about that, and I think I mentioned this before, but it's good to just remind everyone. So each month, there is a meeting that the mayor has. The mayor, one of the other trustees, it's typically Gina, and the three land use board chairs and the attorneys and a couple of other interested parties, building inspector. At that meeting, a couple of meetings ago, the board chairs were directed that, or the mayor was saying that the village is incurring an unbelievable amount of legal fees and both in lawsuits, but also consulting expense. And the board chairs were given explicit directions to start.
Chair, it's being recorded. Do you want that recorded?
Yeah, that's fine. I, I mean, I, right, it's no problem with this being on the record, right?
Yes, I just do want to caution everyone, we did already vote to grant the adjournment to move this to the next hearing. So I I am uncomfortable with going too far into any detail.
No, we're not going, we're not going. Yeah, we're not going detail into that case at all, or that application. This is just how we're going to run meetings going. Yeah, it's fine. But how we're going to run, and the process has changed from what it's historically been. So what I mean, Powell said, Powers, I'm sorry, what said we should do is rather than the old way of drafting the resolution and then voting on it, all right, we should determine if we believe we have a majority, all right, or more, take a straw poll to make sure that we have a majority based on a outline of a structure, and then instruct the attorneys to draft the resolution, right? So that you know it's going to, or it's, you probably have a majority vote for that outline that you took a straw poll on, draft that resolution, and then present it for a formal vote after that resolution has been drafted. And that's how we've been instructed to proceed, which is a change from the historical procedure, right? Which we're getting from above, so.
I would posit that that is totally illegal. So I.
I understand.
Object to that strenuously because I think the public has a right to hear a debate post-hearing about all the issues. And historically, we were free to debate, and then we instructed the lawyer based on the conditions that the board agreed upon, that those would be put into a document. So to be given a document without the benefit of public discussion amongst the board members of all of the issues is allowing the law firm to write the final decision here.
So.
With all of its nuances and all of the political and legal aspects of it, it's, can't be done like that, in my opinion.
Understood, and I think, I think, you know, we've debated this Fowler Farm. We've debated specifically, I think Fowler Farm, which is the first kind of. We've debated specifically, I think Fowler Farm, which is the first kind of just case that we're handling under the new procedure. There's been a lot of debate on that. We're not trying to limit debate on that one, but we have, we're at a sketch panel, sketch plan approval point. We have debated and discussed kind of a basic framework to frame that discussion as we move into preliminary plat and final plat approval part of the process. So I hear you. I I don't think that's our intention or was the mayor and Eileen's intention, but if you have an objection to that, I would take it up with them because.
Yeah, I mean, avoiding litigation is not a substitute for having a fair and open public hearing on issues that affect the public. And one of them is major site review and a subdivision of the last remaining farmland in the village. So that definitely seems to be of public interest and to allow a law firm to take an outsized role in deciding what the final result is on a sketch plan is.
Yep.
Based on avoiding litigation seems very untoward.
Understood. And I I strongly disagree with the characterization that we're letting the law firm drive the bus here on this. I I think, you know, we have.
I say great acceptance to that. That's the remainder of what I'm saying.
Yeah, I think we've had a lot of discussion on this.
But Mark, the only discussion is is what's on the record. That's the debate, discussion, the public, like what's what we're doing now is the is the debate. Like the discussion has to be on the record. We can't, we haven't had an opportunity because we can only discuss if for if we have a quorum in the in public. So we haven't discussed it at all. We've had testimony from the applicant, we've asked questions, but there's been zero discussion. But there's a fully formed, you know, decision like out there that hasn't been discussed. And then we're being told that we're going to have to decide on it the same day that we see it, even though it never incorporates anyone's suggestions that occur, you know, from any individuals.
Yeah, and we're not trying to short circuit, short circuit that process, so.
But there has to be an open discussion where we have our questions addressed and we need to have our feedback addressed. And we need to see before a vote, the actual document that reflects not broad concepts, but the details and specifics to make. Make it a legitimate decision.
Well, correct me if I'm wrong, but isn't a sketch plan broad concepts? And the details are followed up in a preliminary plat and final plat? Isn't that the?
Include all the details that we that we have.
At the sketch plan? That's not my understanding of how a sketch plan works.
No, if if there are conditions that the board and majority of the board agrees on, then what we do is we have a conditional approval of the sketch plan. And that conditional approval has to go to the applicant and they have to come back with the changes appearing on the sketch plan and labeled. Otherwise, it's not a conditional approval, it's an outright approval. And what the law firm has drafted is an outright approval. It's not a conditional approval. It says if we have these conditions, the applicant doesn't have to change the sketch plan. They just come back and we'll have some more discussions and nothing will get changed. So that's not a conditional approval, it's what's been drafted. But there's been some discussion that some board members would like to see some environmental conditions and they're not getting into the document as a conditional approval. I don't know if this board wants conditional approval, but some people on the board seem to.
John, from a legal perspective, do you agree?
I'm going to be honest, I'm very uncomfortable getting into details right now, being that we voted on the adjournment. All I will say is we can discuss this on the fifteenth.
That's fine.
There's no requirement that the board vote on the fifteenth. That will be John's request, but the board can take the time.
Yeah, and we're not trying to short circuit, just for the record. I want to make it crystal clear, we are not trying to short circuit discussion of this. If there are points that you want to air and and put on the record, the fifteenth is is the opportunity.
But if we have a document that's, you know, a lengthy document that's been drafted in the absence of discussion, how does that get just voted on in the same meeting? If if if, you know, are you going to be penciling in changes and initialing them and then we'll vote on that? Because this is not the way it's been done in any.
Usually not how it's done.
Yeah, well, right. So so you're requiring a a public discussion, but you already have a document that you're going to then ask us to vote on without the ability to change anything based on the public discussion.
That's not true.
Which is not.
Well, that's not true. If 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 we if we determine that that if we determine, we have a draft.
I'm just going to remind everybody again, we we did vote on the record to adjourn this to the fifteenth.
Let's let's.
But as a question of procedure. One would never vote on a document that one receives that day. You don't have time to see whether the changes made. You don't have a discussion about why they weren't or why they are or whether what's going to be in there, what's not. How can you ask people to adjudicate, to vote on something without without discussion? This is in general, anyhow, we want, we are crafting something, we need to see things. We need to see them before we can vote and we need to review them.
But this is a process that would invite litigation, not prevent litigation. That's like the basic problem is if you don't have a procedure that is open and follows the procedure, then that invites litigation. So the rationale that's been given is, you know, completely counter to the procedure that you're outlining. So I think it has to go to some higher ups about whether this is a good procedure.
No matter who the applicant is, we just, there's always a process.
I will bring that up.
And just so that we know the process.
Which is next week.
Rather blind at this point to be told that there are changes afoot, changes in the procedure, and we're in a black box here.
Yeah, that that's good feedback.
That's not going to work.
Litigation prevention could be, you know, litigation could be deterred by having a completely open discussion and then, you know, and then directing the attorneys to incorporate that into a document. And then we have a chance to review it again and then vote on it. But the the, you know, crucial thing is it is, you know, do the majority of board members want a conditional, you know, sketch plan approval? Which goes back to the applicant, incorporates the changes, then gets filed because that's the only thing that would be conditional. Or what's being created, which is unconditional. So those are the, that's like the core question.
Yeah, that that's super helpful.
Yeah.
I'm going to bring that feedback, take that back to our our next meeting with the mayor and, you know, see, run that up the flag.
Okay, thank you, great.
Perhaps the mayor should meet with several board members to discuss, you know, get different board members to meet outside of the.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, so, thank you, everyone.
Okay, thanks.
And motion to adjourn our meeting tonight, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, good night, everyone.
Good night, thank you.
Good night.
Good night, Alex.